We're starting, you guys, this is a regular council meeting, May 2nd, 2022.
The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, still cold.
Mayor Lachlan. Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodwayler.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the April 18th regular city council meeting. The approval of a Class E liquor license, a Class B native wine, and a Class C beer and Sunday sales privileges for the Jack and Jill. The approval of Trenton Shooty as a fire cadet for the West Branch Fire Department. Claims for May 2nd and the monthly financial report for March 22, motion someone.
So move.
Jerry. Oh, I forgot to.
I was just about to say that.
Yeah, we were talking.
Um, can I do this first?
Do it. Well, go ahead.
Okay, consent agenda will stay where we are. Any comments on the consent agenda?
One, one.
Pardon?
Um, I thought we, Matt, I thought we had, um, some grant.
So, the grant, the money goes into the account, and we pay it out. I mean, the money's in there, because it was for $5,000, we paid the other thirty. Yeah, there was, there was $5,000.
All right.
I have a question too.
Go ahead.
To 295, to Wrath Chief for Rush Power Drive. So I see it says for wastewater treatment plant. Does that get to come out of the wastewater money, or is it gonna come out of our regular budget money?
Good question. I mean, it wasn't part of, I mean, it's, it's for the plan exchange, I mean, trying that final time. It wasn't planned to come out of the wastewater.
Good.
Want to come out of the wastewater again, but otherwise it's just.
It's budgeted and we don't have to finance it, you know, like that.
Um, second juror won't be on the meeting tonight, by the way, so. Okay, any other questions, comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, let's vote Wesley.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
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 Okay, back up to item five, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, communication's open forum, if anyone is here to speak to the council, we'd love to hear what you have to say. Uh, we cannot act on anything, but we will hear you, so anyone. Hearing none, we'll move on to item eight. Third reading of ordinance 792, many chapter 165 of the Code of Ordinances, Code of Ordinances, regarding signs in the HCI zoning district, I need a motion please. Someone.
What's happening?
Okay, this is the third reading, we made no changes from last time. Any comments, anyone? Hearing none, let's vote Wesley.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yeah.
Goodwayler. Stulman. Sexton.
Yes.
Public hearing. On the proposed amendment number five, to be amended and restated West Branch Urban Renewal Plan, is anyone here to publicly address, address the proposed amendment number five, hearing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to resolution 22-38, approving and adopting amendment five to the amended and restated urban renewal plan for the West Branch Urban Renewal Area, motion. Hearing. Okay. So this is. Uh, anybody need clarification? This is, uh, just for the public record, Summer Parkside Hills. Okay.
Right.
Summer Parkside Hills and entire Crowe Site Block from Main Street to College and Fourth Street to Second Street.
That's, that's designated, so I'm in white.
Correct.
For that. This will allow us to proceed with development and TIF renewal, TIF planning.
So, hold on, I was reading this, and it also includes a parcel that includes that area that are 25 feet on either side of Wopsey Creek as it meanders through corporate city limits, so that's just 25 feet on each side all the way through town.
Correct.
Yeah. Because we may be able to apply that to a TIF.
Yeah.
Asking. Bringing up the creek.
Correct.
Good idea.
Wonderful.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Okay.
Um. Um, hearing none, let's continue to vote. Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Goodwayler.
Yeah.
Stulman. Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Resolution. 22-39. Um, approving the final plat for Parkside Hills, second edition of branch, motion please.
I got a question first. Okay, go ahead, I, so move.
We'll say it. Um, Tom.
Why do we have something from Spirit Financial about our deadline?
That is, that is a requirement of every TIF amendment.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Parkside Hills. This is, what areas is specific, I'm sorry, lots one through four?
Lot 14.
Fourteen.
Right. Just lot fourteen.
Yeah. Which is going to be lots one and two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just sectioning the lot. So we broke, we broke that up, this is the lot that we broke up, um, so we could do individual lots, so we didn't have parking lots, me and them through each other's properties. It just made the better breakup, we didn't change the buildings, we only had structure before, we limited this to lot lots, to make sure we could sell each individual parcel, rather than one bar parcel, so.
It's easier TIF-able, much more easier to tip projects. It's okay. Um. Lost my, sorry. Vote. Go ahead, Leslie, we're good.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goodwayler.
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Your one.
Yeah. Resolution 22-40, approving developers agreement with advantage development, including tax increment rebate payments, motion please.
So move.
Second.
Okay. So this outlines a 70-30 agreement?
Yes, uh, this would, this would apply to lots 10, 13, and 14, which is just made into one and two. So the lot 10-1 is the one that will go up to 400,000 and stop. Uh, 13 and 14, or one and two, will be, that will be 10 years each.
Up to 400,000 total.
Just for lot 10.
Just for lot.
There's no cap on the 13 and 14.
Um. Questions, anyone?
This is just for the Parkside Hills one, here's a next agreements for the OBP site. This is a different owner.
Different owner listed.
Right.
Um. Let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Goodwayler.
Yes.
Stulman.
Yeah. Okay, 22-46, resolution, um, approving a developers agreement with advantage rentals LLC, including the tax increment rebate payments, motion please.
We'll move.
Second.
So this is the existing remodeled BP station.
Hold on. How do you get a developers agreement for something, sorry there.
The, the base value, unlike at Parkside Hills, which will be almost as terrible because it was ag land, base value will be what the value was when it was just the old station. So he gets incremental, the, the value on the increment, which is the new assessment above what was there before. And includes. Yeah, so the new, he's obviously remodeling the old one, which probably will give value on that, and he's adding on, so whatever the value is above that, what they haven't assessed that now would be what he would get the rebate off of.
So basically, I think, what are we running, 465 or 475 assessed value right now on that site?
Yeah.
So when we get the new in 2023, January 1, 23, we'll get the assessed value of the building and where it's at, then they'll take that assessed value, subtract that 500 or just over 500,000, and that's the gap that capture, 70% of that gap.
Good, so. Yeah, so.
The rental company is still me, I just.
Yeah.
It's, it's still me. That's just me.
It's a shell game, I get it.
Yeah, well, I have a lot of rental stuff, so it's, it's just the rental division of that, and so.
If it was the same company, I would add one agreement.
But, so. So this isn't going to take away from anything we're getting right now.
No.
On the side.
No, you're, you're good, you will get every, you'll get everything that you are getting now, plus 30% of what the new value is.
That's the previous.
Yep.
Right, leave it as is, it's probably worth more than what you own.
I would guess so.
Very much left to me.
Yeah.
Maybe a wall or two.
Yeah, okay.
Um, anybody else, anything more? Okay, vote Leslie please.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman. Sexton.
Yes.
Goodwayler.
Yes.
All right, Crowe Ready Mix, new Crowe Ready Mix, resolution 2241, moving the site plan for the Crowe Ready Mix Temporary Concrete Plant, motion please.
So move.
Second. Um, you see the map? Um. They're not, they're gonna be pulling a lot of concrete in the future, couple of roads, interstate, so. Is this a two-year ask in here, even though it could go long?
Two years from the start of the project is probably how we need to phrase it, just in case there's extensions or they start later, you know, that just, yeah.
Engineers have reviewed. Any comments from Dave?
That can't be right.
Okay.
Heat trips per hour, 240 loads out, 160 loads in.
That was discussed at the planning and zoning meeting last week, and it should be more like 20 loads an hour.
There you go.
Say that, be, you line up on interstate.
That should be more like 16 and 20.
Okay.
And I don't know if you got the minutes from the planning and zoning, but that should, but those numbers should be reflected.
Yep, yep. Uh, that was approved by P U Z.
Yes.
That wasn't done, yes. Um, I guess my only concern would be cleaning the road, dust control, that's probably our only concern. Keeping it all.
And our intention is to get with the city and force some accurate approaches coming out onto the road, so we don't damage that, any road with the trucks coming out of there, and then we will have a broom on site for any track out.
We'll trust you to do, take care of that. Process, say that again.
Yeah.
Silage or?
I just didn't know, I didn't know if we did worry about
What?
You know, auto forest or outdoor or?
You complain about dust or traffic or?
It's zone.
I, I, I get it.
For them, do what they need to do, they don't really get to say so.
I get that, but that doesn't mean you can't ask.
Doesn't, if it doesn't matter what they say, then there's no sense in asking.
It matters to me, it matters to me, and I say means something.
If there's a bad amount, then that's where we could figure out if it's a nuisance or not, it'd have to be extreme amount, we'd have to work on it, if it's a little bit of dust, obviously there's nothing we can do, but let's say they're doing stuff they weren't supposed to, and it smells, and you know, all that stuff, then you have to.
It was like the old Warner used to be where Casey's was, even, yeah. That was the problem, but yeah, that's, yeah, kind of was my question.
Does DNR have any say on the, the, um, landscape? Holding back spillage or anything like that?
We've already applied for air and water permits for the site through the DNR, I, I don't know, got copies of those.
I know you've got them, because you wouldn't, you wouldn't have gone through to PNC without them, so Dave's not on the call, but we wouldn't have passed it forward without it, so.
All right, anything else on this subject? Well, go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goodwayler.
Yes.
All right, get those roads done as soon as possible, prior to this detour.
Hey.
Just begin.
Yeah.
All right, water ma, water tower maintenance, uh, resolution 22-42, proving a water tower maintenance inspection agreement with McGuire Iron. Motion please. Um, let me get a motion, and then we'll talk about it.
Second.
Cherry, second. Um, you, you presented to us.
Yes, my name is Melinda Kurtz, I presented to you folks back in January on the water.
See what else?
Um, and, um, there was some additional information that I learned, and so we sent an exclamation, an explanation or further information to the public works, to the city administrator and elite water operator just later this afternoon. Um, and all I want to ask is if you could just table this till the next council meeting, so everyone, including the council, has some more time to, um, fully understand every, you know, get all of the information that has been sent to them, that's, that's all I'm asking.
So you gave us a quote two months ago or so.
And it was updated recently. There were some things changed, or had requested the public works, we need a water operator.
So this body hasn't been able to really compare quotes, but we rely on staff to do that, compare the quotes, and this is.
Correct. Um. Talking with Matt and talking with Tim, um, quotes are very similar, McGuire was slightly cheaper, it's pretty much a business decision. Uh, McGuire is better buck for our money when we're looking out for residents. Um, in terms of the letter that we got this afternoon, typically, before any public meeting, we at least need 24 hours before that can be given or submitted to any city. Um, that's just, depending on what that item is, some items, it's gotta be 10 days in advance. Um, and the thing that was sent to me had to do with, didn't really have anything to do with our decision, I know one of the staff members told you that. Um, but it really came down to the better quote was from McGuire, it had nothing to do with that a past city that was a reference, did not have 100% nice things to say about your company, um, that was not taken in account. Um, so that letter would have been, from staff's perspective, would, would not have mattered.
I looked at the proposals book too, and from looking at it, it looked like mine was cheaper, and I had a couple of things included in mine that the other companies did not.
You want to speak on that?
And I'm more than happy to take those out of my proposal to make it fair, even, and apples to apples.
So we did have, we did have them, she turned in multiple quotes, she turned in one originally, and then um, Tim had contacted McGuire somehow in the process, the, somebody missed phone call, whatever. They met at a conference, Tim had mentioned that he wanted another quote, and they came right out and did it, so then went back to Melinda and gave her an opportunity to give us another quote. Um, then I had Tim go through, Tim laid out, um, theirs was for 10 years, theirs was for eight, Tim went in and broke them all out, and he continued the rest of the program out for 10 years from McGuire, and the, so the upfront cost of painting the tower are slightly more, and all the maintenance all added in, so when you look at the original ones, the first, I don't remember what it is, seven years or something, is, it, it costs a little more from McGuire. The ongoing, long-term costs of the maintenance program are less by a few thousand dollars.
Because mine included the mix on maintenance program with it.
Okay, um, I don't know exactly how much of that adds in there, you want to provide that, but I have a question. I guess I thought Tim had talked to you about that part of it.
Mine, mine is looking through the, the, the program and the maintenance as well.
Okay, we don't need to talk about that here, I mean, details, I guess.
Well, we do if we're gonna vote on it.
Well, okay, but I feel like, you got this today, this afternoon, right? Today? You got some new information today?
The letter is. About the pricing, there was. I won't go into as many details, just one of the staff member, and they explained why we went from one company, included something that really didn't have to do with our decision making. And I think that's because that staff member is new in terms of getting quotes, and so, get it, I would have made those errors too my first time, so. Um, that kind of spun us off into, is it a quality company, and that's not, that has nothing to do with what we're judging here at all, so.
Is there any hurt, because it sounds like you're kind of unfamiliar with.
I mean, I sat with her and talked about it, I, I guess I didn't realize that we didn't have exactly, Tim told me about this earlier today, we talked about it, that he didn't have that in there, but he also stated that the cost of the mixer and the ongoing would not be made up by the, the extra amount that they, that's on Suez compared to McGuire, so looking at that, it didn't make sense to go back and get another quote, if it was just gonna be that a $5,000 mixer could be done, and that, that extra would be made up in a couple of years of the, of the maintenance.
I apologize, but a mixer is more than $5,000.
I'm just telling you what Tim told me today. He told me that he was told he could get, that McGuire had dealt with it, the mixers before, didn't put them in as normally as part of the agreement, because the cost of having them in the agreement wasn't beneficial to the cities, for the most part. Because all it was, was put in this, this mixer, and then we pay you, and pay you, and pay you, and the mixers don't wear out in the amount of time that the that the amount of money we'd spend would pay it back.
We would also service it every year, and industry standards says a mixer lasts about every five to seven years. But like I said, I'm, if you would give me the opportunity, I would like to remove that part from my proposal and send you an updated proposal.
Can't do that, you can either table, or you can either, yeah, accept.
Right, table or accept.
So both companies were sent sent the same green, or the same apples to apples?
There was nothing in writing.
Tim talked to them. He just asked them for a maintenance agreement, told them.
Which is very standard, it's very normal in this industry, that, that's how it goes.
And we just like send out RFPs or something like that if we would.
We do, depending on what it's for.
Yeah, let's not be stand up for students.
I mean, if council be more comfortable, we can table it till the next one. We can have her submit another quote, that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't mean that we're gonna go with the quote, or even recommend.
I'm uncomfortable, so, they gave a quote, they saw, you saw it, now you're giving a different quote. I mean, kind of unfair.
I don't understand why you're too close. And like, here's, here's our numbers, can you beat these numbers?
Well, can I say, I think they didn't give me his quote, I, I saw it in your agenda packet.
Today, we saw it today.
No, I saw it last week.
If I may.
Go ahead, this, McGuire?
Yes, uh, you saw Jake present, two ago, Jake and I run around Nebraska, I, or Texas, Nebraska. I would just like to say.
No, no. So who, well, give us your names.
My name is Sam Gage, uh, and so, I work, I work with McGuire Iron, I work with Jake, and so, um, there's, there's a couple of ways this, this works out. Uh, Matt could send out an RFQ and RFP and send that out, and then we can respond to that with our price, you know, we climb the tower, and that's one way it is. Uh, another way you can work this is, we come out and climb the tower and give our suggestions, that's what Melinda's done, that's what we've done, and just because there's a mixer versus not mixer, honestly, just to be frank, that's not the end of the world. A, a mixer is up to the choice of the city, whether they like it or not, it's not a make it or break it item. I, I, in my humble opinion, it is not a reason to table it for future decisions, that is the suggestion of the other company. Our suggestion has been, um, not to put one in, and I don't think apples to apples, I think it's very astute, um, of the mayor and the council gentleman over here that, you know, going back and forth, can we beat this price, can we beat this price, I think the, it's the opinion of the water superintendent, McGuire's the company they're recommending, um, I don't think a mixer versus not mixer, can you beat this price, can you beat that price? I, I strongly suggest there's, there's no reason to table it, if you do, of course, that is prerogative of the council, but I don't think that's a reason to, to table this for a future meeting.
One more time.
Thank you. The reason we recommended a mixer is, I spoke with Tim about it, uh, your south tank, it freezes a lot, there gets a lot of ice in there that could damage the tower, and also can affect the pressure of the water, of, uh, the water pressure in the town. And that is why you install a mixer, aside from also stratification and things like that, um, keeping the water temperature even, things of that nature. Uh, we've discussed it, he requested that I include it in my proposal.
So here's my problem, my only problem with this, is that this dude's numbers are in our package, so, I mean, it's pretty, pretty easy to beat somebody's number, when you get to see somebody's numbers. You know, if, if, if they were both supposed to bring bids in, and our people say that we need to go this direction, and I, I think that's only fair, I mean, it's not, it's not fair, we don't do that with anybody else, here, here's Lynch's numbers, can you beat him, I mean.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
This came, this is coming last minute, I'm uncomfortable with tabling it, to tell you the truth.
If you can't request.
We've already got a staff, the staff has recommended.
Deal, I do this every day. If Tim's really asked her to include a mixer, and didn't ask McGuire to include a mixer, that's wrong. I would never do that, I do maintenance every day. In my opinion, it should be tabled, because you can't ask one, and have their numbers come back higher, and then you didn't ask another company to do it, well, of course. I went to order a car and said, hey. I want twenty-two inch wheels on this one, I go to another car and say I only want twenties. And then I'm. Get all upset because one bigger wheels is more expensive, well, yeah, I asked for it. So how do you do that? If that's truly the case, without Tim being here, I can't really ask him.
I'm not trying to point the finger to anybody or get anybody.
And I'm not mad at him, I'm just saying you don't do that. So that's really what happens, it's weird to ask a question, but you can't ask separate quotes.
Okay, um, who made the motion?
But you don't have an opportunity to listen to me.
Okay, so it'd be up to that motion.
So do.
Table or not table.
I just think that's unfair, I mean, so at the end of the day, then when the, the new numbers come in, does. The other person get to look at the other person's numbers and see if they can beat them, I mean. Cause, cause that's what we're, that's what we're allowing to happen, right? Well, maybe that's why he beat you.
It sounds like, it sounds like I was lower the upper motivation, it was the maintenance fees where.
If staff follow my direction. Suez had an opportunity to counter because of how far off those were, that was my direction to staff. So. Because yes, if you could see it in the packet, everyone equally needs to see it in the back. So that one should have been known. To great equality.
Is there a time issue here where some work needs to get started? I don't think so. We're not under a time crunch. Or whatever that's worth.
Twenty twenty-two, I mean, it's good, gotta be done by July, so we can bring their five thousand dollars. Or forty-four thousand dollars.
I don't think it'll make a difference two weeks. So it's up to you guys and your preference.
And so what I think I would do now is I would ask Nick if he wants to. Send his motion. And suggest we table it. And then we vote on that, if it, if there's a vote to table, then it gets tabled. Correct?
Yeah.
And if there's no vote to table, then we move, we don't table it and we vote on it. So I'm gonna put the pressure on you, I guess, that's, that's how I want to do it.
I mean, somebody can tell me that.
I.
She's incorrect. Oh, we can, I think we should table.
I, I think I agree.
Okay, so the motion in the second. Is that a rescension then? Okay, is that all I need?
Yes. So their wrote, their motion in the second is to table.
Man, who knew, who knew that water. Tower business was so cutthroat.
Midwest, yeah.
I don't doubt either one of them, I'm just saying this.
So I would move next, I would, we would vote on the table next.
Yep.
So before, before we do that, if we're gonna table this, and I think the two companies need to have the same. Same specs.
Yep, do it over.
This is, this is what you're gonna bid on, give us your best bid.
Without seeing each other.
May, may I ask one question before you vote? My, my only. May I ask of the council, what would, what's gonna change between now, I, I believe it's two weeks from now, your next meeting? She gives you new numbers, I understand council member on the far right is concerned, one hundred percent, I, I, I. Understand that. I just, uh, I wonder what's gonna change in the next two weeks.
You're gonna give a chance to give new numbers also. She gets to revise her numbers, I don't know why he can't revise his.
Right.
And I hate them. That's a bit.
And I guess we each get an outline of everything that is to be included if we want a mixer, if we want a maintenance program, I want a mixer, if you don't want a mixer in there, which I still recommend.
Yeah, I mean, we can't really tell you, say if we need a mixer or not, we're not educated enough to know.
I don't think it's a good idea.
So. Yeah, if, if I may just real quick, I'm not, I don't want to take your whole evening, I just, uh. You know, let's, you know, the, the worry of course is, you know, she lowballs, which I totally get that. No, 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 I, I, I would completely understand that. I'm gonna, um, let you know that Maguire stands by the numbers that we give. And we're gonna, we're gonna stand by the numbers that we've given because we believe the price we, we give is a fair price. And, and that's the price that we're gonna stand by, I would prefer not to give. Um, I don't do the numbers, that's somebody else, I climb water towers and I tell the council. This, this is, right, right, of course, but I, I find water towers and I say this is what's wrong with your tower. And then if I get the approval, I go back and get some numbers. And my only worry would be that the council, uh, sees low numbers and goes, ooh. When the, when, um, it's already been suggested by staff. To go with Maguire, so tabling it, I under, I can understand that one hundred percent, but I also, I, I. Do wonder the advantage of tabling it. Um. Here maybe overs. If I may say, overthinking, and I don't mean to be disrespectful when I say that, that is the sincerest of, of comments when I say that.
You have a severe record of severely overthinking.
I think. And I think that, and I think that's something that is a potential problem. That's not just for you guys, but in general, but I just, it does make me wonder what's gonna change between now and next week. I don't think the recommend, I cannot speak for Matt and Tim. I don't think the recommendation is going to change. Now, if you would like to just sit on it for two weeks. And not overthink it, but think about it, I guess, that is the prerogative of the council, but I just, that's my only question, is what would change in the next two weeks?
I, I think what it comes down to is.
Okay, that's it, no more. So we got a motion to table. The, uh. The table is, is.
He changed his motion to table instead of. Then Jerry seconded, they were the original motion people.
When we vote, we're gonna vote to table.
Correct, this is a vote to table, yes, is to table it.
And if it's a no, then.
Back to the, uh.
Then I need a new resolution.
Right.
New resolution. Or a new, uh, motion. Okay, let's vote. Vote is to table.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
No.
Stoman.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Okay, so, um. We'll listen to this at another day. Alright. Okay, Hoover's hometown days. Resolution twenty-two forty-three approving various contracts. For Hoover's hometown days twenty twenty-two in the amount of. Twenty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars, motion. Hey, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stoman?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yes.
Okay, transferring funds, resolution twenty-two dash forty-four, authorizing the transfer of funds. Pay some loans off. Motion.
Second.
So this is to line things up Heidi, to pay some bonds payments?
Yeah, yeah, all of them are, um, debts, uh, to move money from, you know, like Tiff or lost or whatever, have rebudgeted. Um, to debt service and one of them is for a public library to put money in there for their budget.
Any questions?
Yeah, why are we putting money in the library?
Cause we have a separate fund like the fire department does, and so we don't really manage their money, we just give them their law every year.
You don't do that?
Is that correct Heidi?
Uh, we move it from a general fund zero zero one to, um, libraries budget, they have a specific. Fund per se, so, yeah.
They have their own separate fund, um, just because some of their funding does come from the county as well. Um, by state law. Libraries are managerial boards, so basically whatever we approve each year in their budget, that's.
Why do we wait until the end of the year?
It's easier to do all your transfers at the end of the year, um, unless you want to pass the resolution, you know, every meeting for a different department.
So how have they been doing, how have they been spending money? They got that much?
Exactly, that's where, that's where I'm getting at. So it still comes out of the general fund either way, it's how our. Our internal tracking. Tracks it, so, go ahead Heidi.
So I was gonna say, it's all general fund money, uh, Jody, it's, it's all coming from the same bucket, we just, like, you know, Adam was saying. Uh, for a library because of various reasons, we, we, you know, ha, they, they have their own fund, so we have to keep track of it separately, but it, it's all coming from the same. General fund.
You have to create a bucket inside a bucket.
Correct.
Same bucket, it just comes out of a different hole.
It's an accounting.
Okay.
We do it every year, I guess.
We do, we do.
Alright.
Any other on the authorizing to transfer funds, anybody? Okay, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Stoman? Goodweiler?
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolution twenty-two dash forty-five, setting the date for a public hearing on amending the current budget. Uh, for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Second.
Jeez, we just set the date.
It's a tough one.
Sorry.
Couple things here I don't understand what's going on. Heidi, can you explain?
We just set the date.
Oh, that's right. I did this last time too. So the date would be, uh. Next meeting?
Yeah. Yes.
Six, June third.
It should be June thirtieth.
Sixteenth day. Yeah. Budget.
Okay. Okay, anything else anybody? Let's go ahead and vote on that, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Goodweiler?
Yes.
Stoman?
Yes.
Okay, item nine, discussion, let's talk about the Meadows, part five, preliminary plat. And a subsidizer's agreement, which we haven't. Got that far yet, have we?
Oh, that's by word.
Yeah. Chris Kofod, co-owner of the Meadows.
Yeah, so I'm here because someone thought we weren't quite, quite ready to present it formally, so. Just here for a discussion. Just so you guys have a chance to look at it and then maybe next time. When we hope to be finished, we won't have so many issues. Um, so if you all have the diagram, we've been here before for rezoning, now we're coming with the plat. Um, so basically they're all eighty feet wide lots. We do need a variance on the street elevation. Um, we have one spot that's right about at seven percent and code calls for no more than five percent. Our other two streets to the south, they were both over. We have a seven and, and the eight percent are on those that have been approved in the past.
Yeah.
Um. Then also. The street width. Maybe there's an issue because Latham Ridge on the east, they have a thirty-one foot street. And Prairie View on the west, which is ours, is twenty-nine.
It's the same street.
Yes.
Yeah, it will.
Right.
Street behind my house can open that up. The street.
So if, if it's okay to do the twenty-nine foot street, which that's what planning zoning kind of recommended. Um, we just have to figure out where we're gonna do the merging. So I think they centered right above Outlot A. Which you can't really see. Because these maps are so small, so, so it's in there to go from the twenty-nine to the thirty-one. Right above that Outlot A, so it's drawn in the plane. To go from twenty-nine to thirty-one. Down in that area.
I'd like to know who missed this.
It wasn't this.
Okay, so Latham Ridge was due. Is that what you're about to say?
It wasn't this, it was supposed to be Greenview or Greenview, Gilbert going north was. Going to be a thirty-one foot wide street, I don't know if that's what the street already was. When the paper came in. He requested that we let him just do thirty-one and pay for it for the, for. All of Prairie View in Latham Ridge. Instead of having him reset up his paper. Because it was gonna cost him. Multiple days to reset his paper and. Equipment and time, so he just wanted to do the whole street, so I discussed with Dave.
Wow.
And then we let him do thirty-one.
That's amazing.
That's the reason.
That's crazy, we've argued over thirty-one and twenty-nine because it cost you much.
So he knew we wouldn't go down with the other one, so he asked if he could do that one wider and I talked to Dave and they.
Which is a contrary to that machine.
Yeah, Dave, Dave knows, Dave knows about this, he's okay with it, he's okay with it. The twenty-nine. Alright, good explanation. What else, Chris?
Let's see, so, um, maybe issues for you guys is the, the back of lots nineteen through twenty-three. We have in there, at least the map I have, we've had it done two different ways, but we have a stormwater easement. On the south end of those lots. Just had some discussion among us and Dave, should it be ten, ten foot wide or twenty? And we reminded them that, that the lots just to the south. They have a ten foot easement. Their lot, so between the two, there was a twenty foot easement. In between those lots and that's to. Let city have access, if there's problems with drainage in the future and anything needs to be corrected or fixed. Then the city can go in and do that.
Okay, but we're not requiring bioswells, is that correct?
That's based on talking with planning and zoning, that's was our. Consensus among both groups is not to do bioswells here. Cause we had done it in the past, so there's three bioswells, uh, to the south. And. Just from a cost standpoint, those are budgeted to have a total of ten thousand dollars and then to the cost fifty thousand dollars to do it afterwards. Um, all the material had to be pushed up by a wheelbarrow. Um, just because the trucks were too big and heavy to get rock and sand and stuff like that up. So it's just really costly, I don't know what the benefits are, I'm sure it slows the water down a little bit.
Well, that bioswell that you're, is different, because it drains right behind other people's houses, Fred Conference House.
Yeah, so.
That drains directly behind this, this what, that you're talking about. Brings into a detention base. So I don't know why we do the bioswells.
So with bioswells in. In your second or.
Yeah, part two, it was part two, yeah.
What's a bioswell?
It holds back the dirt, holds back water.
What's it look like?
It's generally usually native species that help, it's more of a quality than a quantity thing, it does help with quantity, but. More or less you want strong root systems that help either stop soil erosion or any type of hazardous runoff, it would clean it along the way.
Or rock legends, rock legends.
I apologize, I missed part of this, he's, well, he's wanting to put him in and we're trying to talk him out of it?
No.
Other way around.
He's not wanting to put him in. He's not wanting to put him in.
We did it in the past, in a similar, similar area, we did it in the past in a similar area. I don't think they work as good as they're made out to be, that's my opinion.
We are responsible maintaining them.
And all pass P and Z?
I don't, because when, when the water runs through there and starts flooding people's yards, P and Z ain't in here.
That's true, that is true, but they're supposed to be the.
So we do have this outlot A that's in there, right now it's designed to. We'd have to put that into association, um, to have managed that in the future. What, that where the engineers kinda didn't come together was how much water's gonna be going through it there? How big does that basin really need to be? So they need to work on the stormwater counts to make sure we're on agreement and we allow for enough water to be there.
Chris, I have a question, where's that, where's it discharged? Is it just gonna discharge in that open ditch behind? On the south, south side of the road?
So.
Looks like it goes north.
Comes from the.
See, that's what I don't like though, because that's right there, that's that same area that, where the people came in here screaming and yelling.
And that lot forty was a detention in that phase, correct?
Right.
Once it, once the building was pretty much done, that lot. Became sellable.
Right, there is a intake, there is an intake back there, um, that collects water, um, drains it. Underground to Sullivan Street.
Yeah, and if I remember right, there was an issue with that berm.
It got raised, it got raised up.
It was designed wrong at the beginning.
That did get raised up after.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess this is an engineering deal, but. It seems to me that lot A could be dumping more water now on forty that. Lot more water than previously, which could actually flood them, which makes them.
Should be engineered so it doesn't.
And that's where they're, that's where they're debating.
Yeah.
Between the two, and then that would affect the easement with that. Bioswell thing, you know, where the hypothetical bioswell could go in, so there's a couple things that need to be. Trimmed out before you guys approve it.
That little bioswells not gonna affect that lot A much, I just can't see this.
So it, so the other thing that I'm seeing with this is that. This all flows to. To the east. It's all goes down to that retention pond. I'm not so sure that that retention pond was designed to take all the water that's coming from. Everything designed.
Well, that's what it's all been going anyway, I mean, so that's why you.
But now, now you're putting all these streets, all this, all this runoff.
That's why you have these retention bases though, is it because it's supposed to hold it and then release it out, so it doesn't increase the flood?
Right.
And in theory, they should plan for that when they're doing Peterson Valley, they should plan for everything coming off hills.
What existed at that time should be. Which this did exist at that time.
You know.
Should have been.
No, this did not, none of this development did.
The development, no, but the ground was there, the field, the cornfield at the time. Okay, so what do you want from us tonight? What are you looking for?
Um, just to discuss this issues, to let you know what's out there. So I think we do still have the stormwater counts to figure out. And then if you have any other bright ideas what to do with that lot A, or with then, just a hole in the ground.
Says you wanna make it a wet pond.
Wet pond and you wouldn't do a wet pond on cross on a high school? I lost that, I lost that.
I was gonna say, that wasn't him.
No, I know.
So anyway, just if you have ideas over the next week or so.
I don't think we're gonna pay for anything, no, I.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking, I'm just looking for ideas, if there's something we can do.
Mailboxes, you always forget about mailbox.
They are, they're in outlot A.
Okay.
Do you drive in, so they drive off the street?
Yeah, so we want.
Let's do it right one time.
We wanna carve it out, uh, so people can swing off the road. It's not drawn in, but that's.
I'm just gonna warn you. Then, then they get lazy and they wanna try to drive up to their mailbox, because they don't wanna get out and walk on the sidewalk, and then they hit some bitches. And then somebody's gotta pay for it.
Is it only one way?
No, because you have to make it ADA compliant and all this other stuff, it's messy, man, I'm telling you.
Okay, anything else you want?
The subdividers agreement, um, I have samples here, now that you guys have them in front of it, but. Just to discuss, one of the things we talk about are the street size. So we're all in agreement who's doing what, and then section two is about sidewalks. So in the past, we've asked for five years length of time in order to put in sidewalks. So if it's not fully developed after five years, then we're required to come in and put sidewalks in. Um, other times it's been three years and that's a quick.
I, I see the weather going up, I don't like so.
I'm buying five.
It's five or seventy-five percent of the lot.
Nobody wants to count.
But yeah, seventy-five percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So seventy-five percent of lots are done, then they have to go ahead and do two. Because you might have a lot of people in there, you know, one, one gap here, one gap there, but like you said, if they keep going like that, you can run out, it can be done.
Yeah, whichever first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I got a question, um, are all these, are all twenty-three of these lots rezoned R two then?
Yes.
Okay, so, I know there's not been a lot of discussion on. I'm just gonna throw this out here, the turning lane, when this whole phase. On the, the last phase ended up with a lot of R two, this is gonna have a lot of R two. This is now adding a lot more traffic, if these all turn into. R two, you know, zeros. Gonna end up with a lot more traffic going onto Main Street, so I think.
They're all gonna go east or west.
No, you can't say that.
So.
Could there be an opportunity for you to contribute to a turn lane on Main Street?
And I would just point you back to the traffic study that we had done.
That's a no, you said no.
Correct, because I said, even though Meadows is fully built out, even though the school gets adjusted or whatever. The middle school goes out there, even with all of that, turn lane is not needed, and that was the traffic study.
That was, that was before. She has not there.
And they said it was because of the Meadows.
No, they, they didn't specify, they just said traffic.
No.
It wasn't school traffic or any traffic, this increases traffic.
It was calculated in there.
The school did.
School studies said that.
They didn't increase traffic.
Also.
That may be, I don't know if they looked at the combination, but we had tried rezoning. We've been in a rezoning process.
You had a preliminary plat for this whole, whole phase, with the idea that everything was gonna be R one. And then now there's a lot of R two in here.
We never said the whole thing to people.
Gotta see what the traffic city.
Yeah, but you had a, you had a preliminary plat that just kinda just a, this is what we're looking at doing. Yeah.
Are these lots, the zone to family, you know what's gonna actually go in then?
Um, either single family or.
Whatever they want, whatever meets, ah, that's a lawyer.
Point zero outline means they use, they build right here the center point, right?
No, no.
They can put two homes on one lot.
They do a survey and split it down the middle.
What else do you wanna ask, Chris?
Otherwise, as far as I know, that's, yeah, just wanted to keep the ball rolling, so.
Okay, with a twenty-nine foot street, uh, easement in the back for the bioswell, I, I would say ten feet.
Yeah, how the engineers work it out.
How an engineer work it out, yeah.
That's fine if you get ten.
Okay with the wet pond.
That's where I'm gonna get my little wet pond, way back there.
There's one in Latham Ridge two, which is fine, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, then you got two, you know, one street. A block or two of each other, so I just, that's why I just wonder if there's anything.
Sure would be nice if we didn't have to have these, but. Yeah, it's just.
I know, I don't like.
They turn ugly.
Well, that's, it's an association, so we're not gonna take care of it.
Well, that's the problem, associations, they don't either.
Yeah, we ended up buying one, right?
Yep, we bought one.
Okay, Chris, um. Thank you. Okay, library steps. So, uh. Not looking too good, we got two quotes. And Nick is here to. Explain, library director Nick Schimmel.
Uh, so naturally, I wanna apologize for the timing of this. Um, it actually took between November and, uh, end of March, early April for us to actually get bids on our, uh. Are given these replaced, so, um, a lot of the process time in for this year, um, I know that makes it hard to. Make up for it, any sort of funding, um, state. Towards the middle of fall, uh, last year, the library board became concerned with the upper part of the stairs, the ones that are set, it's closest to the building. Leaving that there are tripping hazard and falling hazard and. Oh, there's part of it that's probably gonna just come off as well, so, I don't know, that'd be a. I, I don't know what kind of hazard that would be, um, so we got two quotes. One of them is a hundred and fifty percent higher than the other. I have no idea anything about cement, um, so I talked to them and said, well, it's because one includes a full footing, which is a poured base that connects into the, the posts that go down. Um, the other one, it's just post footings, which would be like what you put on a deck or something like that. So knowing the, the grounding that, or the grounds that we have at the library, um, the full footing is something that we definitely recommend and. We were looking at, uh, I think the library board was a little. Surprised about the cost of the overall project for that little segment of stairs, um, and so they wanted to ask. If you would be interested in, uh, helping by providing fifty percent of that, um, I don't have any idea where your funding would come from from that. And I talked to Adam a little bit back and forth, I know it's a, a weird timing on that. Uh, you've got listed where we would provide funding for, um, most of it is our savings CDs, which I think. Uh, people tend to be hesitant to use, they wanna see it go towards improvements, uh, but it is there, they wanna see something new and interesting with it. Uh, with that fund, with those funds, um, I know we're a decent bit off, those are always mentioned when we talk about any sort of. Library space addition, um, as being for kickoff fund, so I think that has a few of those funds for that, um, at least to the extent of the full project, so that's why. Why they were asking, and they, um. They just wanted to see, uh, if you'd be interested, since we, we share, um, liability for the building, making sure that it's safe as well as upkeep of, uh, the city facility.
Hogs of them, thirty-five, thirty?
Ninety-three. Ninety-three.
Are you gonna make me do the math?
Twenty-nine years.
Okay, thank you.
Longer than me and Nick.
So I do agree that the post footings, they're just gonna slide down the hill, they probably just slide downhill all the time. It's a pure footing. And set the concrete, it's just gonna slide, so I agree with the slap footing deeper.
And I, I said, I don't have a good way of showing pictures here, but yeah, you can see where the, the segment upstairs is just kinda going downward and it's breaking off where. It met the, sort of the base for entry.
I don't know if there's other ways to achieve it without.
So if you're gonna pay nine thousand dollars for every thirty years. Or. Twenty-four thousand.
We don't know that.
Well.
We don't know that that nine thousand will last thirty, yeah, you don't know what it.
Virtually, that's what's there now.
Yeah, nobody knows. The sidewalk below may not hold.
I was gonna say, I'm, I don't think that they actually have them.
You could drill holes, two holes. Four feet in the ground, pour around all that, use that as an anchor, you don't need to have a full footing around this thing.
Forty-eight inch period, down six feet as well.
Four feet.
It's only four feet.
Some, some.
It is all backfill, it's all sand, sandy backfill.
It's, it's lucky if it's all sand. There's three bar and concrete and bricks and rock.
So how come we're, this is second time tonight, we've got bids on a project that are, have different parameters.
Well, we, honestly, we just said, hey, um, I, I did offer, I asked, I didn't offer them to, to, um. To try and beat the bid, but I said, hey, could, what would your cost be for full footings, and they didn't reply.
Answer. Okay, so that's really the underlying issue is how to pay for it. The real issue is.
Makes a difference if we're paying twenty-four thousand or if we're paying nine thousand.
So, not to bring this up, but I. I had a rumor, I had a rumor a while back that we, we own the library, but we don't own the library.
We don't. School.
School property.
If we ever vacate the school, take it back.
Right, so. That, that changes things a little bit.
Cause we are someday looking for a new library?
Well, no, I mean, not necessarily, but I mean, twenty-four thousand dollars, that's, that's quite a bit of money.
That's just, I'm assuming it's just a deed with a reversionary interest.
I wanted something new today.
That was gonna be my question, is do we have some sort of weird nineteen eighty? Six. Two hundred bucks, like, there's a, there's a question I gotta look into, because there's a, there was a law passed that for reversionary interest that's, if you don't. Exercise them within twenty-one years, you may be gone. So I gotta look into that.
That's gonna go over real well.
The booters out of our library, you know.
Yeah, they can't do that, all American concrete was gonna get cheaper.
Yeah, that's.
That's why I'm kinda reading.
There must be a putting underneath there, but there's a putting underneath there, it's not going down the hill, I'm sorry, but, maybe sinking, but it's, we're thinking we're going down the hill.
Matt's had to replace dirt under, underneath the, the farthest one down, uh, water just would wash under it and made a pretty decent sized hole and. Yeah, I would agree, it doesn't look like there's anything going down, I don't think there's anything.
I think by.
Those more stairs going to the street.
No, this is upper steps, upper, upper steps.
I, I don't think there's anything on the ones to the street, I think.
No, I guess, those have been there for.
Those have been there for over.
This is in front of the door of the library.
Over sixty years, they're not going.
I'll guarantee that. Okay, anyhow.
That's back from concrete, it's cheap, it's done a bit of old, it's blown up.
Part, the upper part is, is a good possibility, it's still sitting on top of the old pool, that's quite so.
Yeah. Alright, so where are we at? My. Is anybody amenable to helping the library pay for this, cause if no one is, then, I guess the answer is no.
Yes, to me, it's kinda which way they are looking at going. You going the twenty-four thousand way, or you going the nine thousand dollar way?
Uh, we were looking for the, the twenty-four thousand, because that was described as the permanent solution for that.
That's what staff recommend.
Um, well, in, in my years, um, if you're sitting on a piece of property that is settling. What time does it ever stop settling?
Good question.
So if you put puddings underneath there, doesn't necessarily mean those puddings are gonna stop settling, especially on that piece of property where it was probably. Twelve feet of fill, and it was, like you say, they just rolled the basement walls in and threw sand in on top of it, so. So.
Could potentially make it worse, do you add more weight?
Yeah, I, settling quick. It's me, I'm not putting puddings underneath them.
What did you do with the hundred ninety-six thousand dollars we just gave you?
You mean the budget?
Yeah.
That's just part of the budget, I mean, that's accounted for.
Was there any money in there for, for fixing the building?
Uh, approximately seven thousand, which is, actually, we, that's part of the budget, uh, amended as well, uh, we had to replace our automatic door openers. So, it, our budget does not account for. Large projects like this.
Alongside end loans, building CD been there?
Uh, since.
Seven, three.
Yeah.
That was my point.
I'd be in favor of using that. Tell Happy.
My opinion is I would, I'd be interested in the five thousand towards the ninety-one, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend twenty-four thousand dollars for puddings underneath that.
I will defer my opinion to the experts. At the front table.
So Jerry's right.
Footing is.
Bigger pier would, would be a foot.
But I don't.
They can do twenty-four inch peers.
Drill big holes, the anchor, if it's actually. It's actually sliding down the hill, or is it just sinking?
Question, I don't really say what's. I guess he's imposed.
I think it's just settling, this is.
My guess would be they're just selling.
Sidewalk told me, the sidewalk down, down lines told me place for sliding down the hill.
Well, a lot of this started to crack off too, which could be, I, I guess could be an indication that it's pushing forward on it.
But a question, but.
Baselab.
Well, that one crack is because there was a. Joint there.
Yeah, a lot of this is just frost damage, it's freezing thawing.
I guess I just think simple, and if the stairs there, that have. Been there for twenty-nine years, are just laid, poured on whatever, without puddings, they've lasted twenty-nine years, so I'll pay nine thousand for another twenty-five years. That's my opinion.
Anybody else?
It happened. Drill peers, did you include?
He just said post.
Post hole.
Post loads.
So what are we gonna tell them then, we'll pay half of the nine thousand, but if you want twenty-four thousand?
Sure.
You're on your own.
Where would the city get the money for the nine thousand?
There was an account that had thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Capital project.
Well, if we can't use the capital project, this is a capital project, and where do we, where do we put that money there?
Probably for the larger ones, but. The way I see it, it's maintenance all around, so. That could be really bad.
Again, it just seems, just seems crazy that, that we're trying to figure out where we're gonna come up with nine thousand dollars.
Well, I see, and little building CD is eleven thousand right there. That's what I'm seeing. That, that reduces their pain of a twenty-four thousand dollar bill. Reduces our pain of. Benny's name. Let's see if D's been there for thirty years.
Aren't there some of them that just get, they can reuse the.
Well, that's available today.
All of them that are listed are available, um, the crop interest CD is in the mid, so September, and that does actually list building maintenance on.
Well, here's a money market account for, and we'll pay, we probably can come up with a thousand camping, there's one for eight thousand. Eighty-five hundred.
Yeah, what do you think about?
It's like to me, the seed steps were poured over top of.
It's what it looked like to me.
Another set of steps.
That's a patch, that's a, that's a repair. I think it fell away, it chipped away. Alright, anybody wanna recommend something, I would recommend that money market of eight thousand five hundred and the city makes up the difference. We may ask Hatfield to put in bigger peers. Than what he, if he's just got a little eight inch peers that they hand dig in, I would. Say some twenty-four inch peers, I don't know how he's gonna drill them in though.
Get back home here. Same thing.
You can get one of those on the escalator up in there.
Oh, need backup?
Yeah.
That's what my suggestion is, use that money market, eighty-five hundred, we pitch in the difference.
I'm against, I'm against the twenty-four thousand dollars.
I'm leaning that way too.
I lean to, Jody's right. Anybody else?
Is this taken, by this picture, is this taking out the slab all the way to the, to the building, or is it just from that slab down, just the set of steps?
I honestly don't know what their plans were either company on terms, in terms of that slab.
I'm reading it as just the slab stays.
Says stoop and stair replacements, if you're replacing the stoop, you're doing it.
I think some of that would have to be at least repaired, because it is losing. The, the top cracks are a combination of, that'll be the stoop, okay, the stoop and the stairs are both losing pieces.
That would help the situation a little bit more. Okay, that's my proposal, anybody else?
Says they're gonna add post footings for the stoop though, too.
That's fine.
I don't know if I want them tearing out the good. Stoop, the good foot, yeah, the stoop footing, so that they can replace it with post holes.
You talking about All American? Now, it's.
How am I drawing on this?
Pushed a button somewhere, obviously.
It's alright, where are we, we gotta come to a conclusion here, guys. Anybody disagreeing? They can pay eight, we'll pay the rest. Eighty-five hundred.
Ninety-one hundred dollar quotes, all that racked up to what?
Don't think it is, or? Seems a little cheap.
No, I'm not even talking about the cost, I'm talking about the explanation.
Yeah.
I'll give you a quote with three things on it, too. I'm gonna pour some concrete. Ten thousand dollars.
That's, that says what he's gonna do. You give too much detail, you just.
Then you're gonna get my work.
Replace the stoop.
Tear it out, is he gonna haul it off, is he gonna, is he, what if he just tears it out and makes a big pile of concrete, and then we gotta have to deal with it?
Yeah, one of them's too good.
Need some concrete up there, you guys? Yeah, we gotta, we gotta finish, I made a proposal, so. Just hear any disagreements.
We're talking about stairs!
See, we overthink things. I told you.
There's no information.
The job.
If it was me. Every day, I'd be like, nope, send me something else back, that is terrible.
So you're gonna spend three times as much just cause you don't like the wording on the bid?
No, I wanna know what the hell they're doing.
It took long enough, honestly, I was just happy to have one.
I know, I'm not, I'm not playing to you, I'm just saying.
No, like, you know. Nick, I mean, he calls up concrete, he doesn't even know about.
I'm not saying he should, what I'm saying is, people that know about concrete should actually tell you about concrete, not just, they were gonna throw some post holes in there and pour some, pour some hot mud.
Okay, irrelevant, how, pay, paying for this.
I kinda would like good quality quotes for, I can tell you what you wanna pay.
Do you wanna throw both these quotes out?
Let's tell the library board, they can sell the eighty-five hundred dollar money market thing, cash it in, and we'll make up the difference.
Tell you how long it takes us to get quotes, because it took you three, four months, basically.
We're actually paying for the whole thing.
Yeah, because they're so busy, why do they want it? When economy's good, no one wants, no one cares about working with the government, once the economy's bad, they want that tax.
Oh. If it's the nine thousand dollars, so again, we're all, we're all in line with the nine, the cheaper one.
So you're saying we're willing to give them a thousand dollars?
About.
Uh, where, where's that gonna come from?
I don't.
We gotta know who's gonna cook up somewhere, if we're gonna give it to.
You're the one that asked that question.
No, that's why I just asked it. Okay. Well, I guess you can tell them we'll give you a thousand dollars. A thousand dollars.
City administrator report, what have you got? We're about done.
Yeah, we are.
I told you, we're not doing a closing session after this meeting, as you know.
We'll be quick, uh, salary survey committee is meeting tomorrow, and then the next month we'll be conducting evaluations. Hopefully, the end of May, if not June, we'll have recommendations on scale and merit policy, and then the end of June would be wage resolutions.
That's you two tomorrow? Right? I don't think, I'm not gonna make it. No Dave, city attorney?
Oh. I know.
City engineer, not present, city staff, anyone? Matt, Heidi? Unless I hear from the city staff very soon, I'm gonna pass you on. Mayor and council. Anything?
I got some. I don't know if the rest of the council have been catching any flack, I sure have on, um. The houses on Cedar Johnson, and how that come popping Lehman's Hill, it's a blind, blind corner, or blind.
Blind one.
Yeah, um. One of the things I've been thinking, you know, I, I know that when we do Cedar Johnson. Sometime in the near future, there've been a talk of cutting that hill down at Lehman's. Should we do it sooner rather than later?
So, we get the builder to, to agree to doing a, instead of backing out, he's gonna pour a turnaround so they can drive out, we gotta do, do that, you guys do.
Yes. Turnaround.
It was discussed with Dave Checkinger and the county, and, no.
We held up the, we held up the building permits, because that was a concern that was raised in P and Z, but P and Z never acted upon it. Um, so, I had talked with David, the builder, and I had suggested that when I built my house in nineteen ninety-one on Cur, uh, Curdeshin Road in the city, that we had that same issue with the site distance. And it was suggested that we put a turnaround in, so that's what we did, so, and then they ended up cutting the hill down later on, but.
Well, that's all well and good, but what if? They run out of room to park, and they park, park along Cedar Johnson?
Well, that won't be allowed.
Tell them, that won't be allowed.
Yeah, also, as part of that agreement, um, the developer offered to, um, have a sign put up that says hidden driveway, and it's been, was supposed to have been ordered, and when it gets here, it'll be erected, so. People going north, um, will know that there's a hidden driveway, as well as a speed zone, the sign was supposed to be put back up to twenty-five miles an hour.
Well, the other thing I thought of, when. When they extend Orange Street out. Maybe we could take part of the hill off at that time. But it, it's dangerous, it, it really is. I mean, uh, the contractors never put the men working sign out at all. And today I came up over that hill, and they're all lined up all the way down, down Cedar Johnson.
Okay, well, yeah, it's, hopefully it get fixed, it's a temporary problem that will get fixed when we do Cedar Johnson.
Well, it'll be temporary until someone gets killed.
Okay, we need to get some signage up, as soon as we get it.
I think that's just a reminder that we should all drive sites before we approve plats, cause that should have been, shouldn't have been allowed.
Oh, that was, that was solid.
So.
Alright.
Could we just put, like, a men working sign ahead?
One there, but, but it's laying down.
Well, I mean, if there's cars in the road, then at least. Should raise. Awareness.
Yeah, it already does, I mean, even if it's in the ditch, it still makes me think about it. Of course, I know it was construction in the driveway. Alright, anybody, any, anything else?
Yes, I got one more thing. We talked a little bit about, um, crosswalk for the roundabout, did you get ahold of the engineer? The engineer was blaming West Branch for, uh, not.
Yeah, or the supervisor was, I'm not sure, that's, it's gonna get resolved, so they're gonna try for the crosswalk. On the east side of the roundabout. The, why is, um, everybody agrees that, why make people cross the street three times to get across once? So they're gonna try to force it in. And make it without the speed bump. That's what they're gonna do.
Did you get ahold of that engineer?
I talked to Neil Shattuck, the Johnson County engineer, and then I talked to Dave, and they have reiterated the same.
Well, here it is, it's May. And do we.
We'll say, um, they'll get the first on the, the roundabout, they'll get the first this week, hopefully they'll get. To review the design, our engineer. And the Johnson County engineers. And if, um, we can turn it, if they can turn it around within a week, it'll go to full. Final design.
So we're talking July?
End of July, or the end of June to do bids, can't remember which month.
November.
They're still shooting for having it done by November.
They were late last time.
Somewhere.
They're on the same timeline, they were for finishing local roads.
You guys aware of a roundabout project? Okay.
You've already got a number.
Be good to us.
Gonna be really expensive.
You know how this goes.
School, July, August. Start, so, yeah, they're about a month or two behind, probably.
You're behind.
Wow, since I've been here.
Anybody, anything else?
Yep. The rezoning for the. For our dealership or however we're gonna do it.
All we need to do is get, is the guy dropped the letter off that he needs signed.
Is that all we need?
We just need to send a letter.
And then the second of all is, the goal was Gatskills shovel, shovel ready, the creek widening by April first and it is May the second.
They are doing design work still. Seven G is.
They were on the property.
They're supposed to be on the property very soon.
Property, they've done the designs. April first was never gonna be a realistic expectation because they had the.
It was a year ago, we decided that was.
All I can tell you is where we're at now, so.
We are a government.
So yes, they were on the property last week. I talked to Dave.
Alright, so we have all the paperwork signed? We need to from the Gatskills to do?
No, we're gonna have to condemn it if they don't sign the agreement.
What's the drop dead date on that?
It's gonna be, they're gonna sign it in May or we're done.
Right now. They had to wait for snow, at least when I got here, they had to wait for the snow to melt and the conditions to be good for the designs.
I'll take the, uh, yeah, I'll take the, uh, I'm filing. Yeah, we do.
Can we send a letter to? Brown's Ford, whatever it's called. When they're unloading cars. They can't have two, both sides of the road blocked. So they got one truck parked on the. South side and one parked on the north. How about they take off over onto? The side road and drive them across Main Street.
Said to me going straight, I said, screw it, just took a laugh.
No, today.
You couldn't get either one, you had to zigzag.
Yeah, today you have to zigzag. Main Street is not a place to unload cars.
That ain't no, that ain't no different than the way they, they unload them trucks at Herb and Lou's when they park in that little skinny. Area that's already where there's cars parked on both sides and you have a semi sitting in there. You can get through, but you gotta fold your mirrors in, so you don't.
We're not Europe. Alright, anything else?
Yeah, why didn't we pay the school three hundred dollars for a track? It's outside, we're not using lights.
It's a fifth and sixth grade meet, the last Sunday.
Okay.
It got paid for by. Mr. Teen was here, a celebrity, Wilton, Grant, they all helped pay for it. But.
That's crazy.
Charges us rent for the track.
That's crazy. It's outside.
It's a wash.
So in other words, if I go up there and run around it, I can't, I have to pay rental? That's. That's what I'm talking about. They won't work with us. So I'm not gonna work with them. They can tell, you can tell them that.
German, anyone?